Welcome, everyone, to the August 9th meeting of the Glendale City Council. Let us please have the roll call.
Councilmember Asatryan.
Here.
Brotman.
Here.
Devine.
Here.
Najarian. And Mayor Kasakian.
Here.
I'd like to ask everyone to rise, place your right hand over your heart, and join me in saluting our flag. Ready, begin. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which is ours, one nation, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Please remain standing for the invocation.
Let us begin by acknowledging that this council meeting is taking place on the indigenous lands of the Tongva people. We are thankful for this day that we have been given, for its blessings, its opportunities, and also its challenges. May we have the strength, discernment, and compassion to carry forth the duties of this council today, keeping in mind the needs of the most vulnerable in our community. May we be challenged to draw upon our best selves for the service of our city. Thank you.
All right, you may be seated. May we have the report of the clerk?
The agenda for the August 9th, 2022, regular meeting of the Glendale City Council is posted on August 2nd, 2022, on the bulletin board outside City Hall.
Thank you very much, and what is next?
Three presentations and appointments, three A agenda preview for the meeting of Tuesday, August 16, 2022, by John Tectalian.
Good evening, Mayor Kasakian, members of the City Council. Next week in the afternoon, we'll have a Housing Authority meeting. All we have on there is the approval of minutes. The evening meeting of the City Council starts at 6 o'clock. Under consent, the first report will be from Public Works regarding a resolution authorizing the Director of Public Works to execute a Clean California Local Grant Program/Grant Agreement with California Department of Transportation. That'll be followed by a report from the Police Department regarding allocation acceptance of $1 million from the Board of State and Community Corrections. And the last consent item that evening will be from Community Development regarding an amendment to a professional services contract with Milk. That's the firm that's helping us with the Verdugo Wash Visioning Study. Under action items at 8A will be the Public Works Department regarding Glendale Beeline Participation in Metro's Student Fairness System. And the big item that evening, which will take up most of the time, I suspect, will be 8B, Glendale Water and Powers Report on the Grace and Repowering Project, GWP Power Supply Planning, and the Clean Energy Initiatives. That concludes next week's preview.
All right, thank you very much. What is next?
Consent items, including ones that follow our routine and may be acted upon by one motion. Any member of the council or audience requesting separate consideration may do so by making such requests before a motion is proposed.
Would any of my colleagues like to pull any items? If there isn't any? We'll all entertain a motion.
I'll move the calendar.
A second.
Do we have, we don't have any cards from the public nor callers?
Nothing for consent items.
All right, so there's been a motion on the second. Let us have roll call on this, please.
Councilmembers Asatryan.
Yes.
Brotman.
Yes.
Devine.
Yes.
Najarian. And Mayor Kasakian.
Yes. Thank you very much. Next item is City Council and Staff Comments. Would any of my colleagues or staff wish to say anything?
I have several items.
Councilmember Asatryan, go ahead.
Kind of want to start off with, the last couple of weeks, I've taken the time to meet with different departments, and not just executives, but with the staff. So I wanted to take a moment to thank the staff for making themselves available. It was important for me to also meet with boots on the ground. So we have a lot of work to do, and there's a lot being done in each of the departments. And so I wanted to commend you all on the work that you're doing in making yourselves available. I attended the installation for Modes of Resistance at the Central Library. It was a beautiful event, highlighting the Comfort Women. I was actually thinking that perhaps we can look into combining some additional public-facing events around arts, live music, and entertainment, and kind of tie those in with different events that we're doing that highlight the diversity of our community. So for example, if it has to do with Comfort Women Day and we're highlighting the Korean community, then there's something maybe on Artsakh Plaza that also ties in with music and arts and vendors to bring out the community. You know, I think over the years, one of the things I've noticed is that if it's, say, an event that is hosted for, say, the Armenian genocide commemoration, or similar to the Comfort Women's Day the other day, the attendees tend to be those from that community. And I think it's really important for us to kind of expand our outreach efforts to ensure that we're using these opportunities to learn from each other's cultures and how we can contribute to the causes that are important to each of us. I attended the concerts in the park, at Verdugo Park, and then on Friday at the Brand Libraries. I have to say, I was very impressed with the turnout at both. The one thing I would want to highlight for the future is how we market the events and making sure that there is one place people can go to, particularly on social media, to see all the concerts. It was interesting, actually, the one at the Brand Library, the band that was playing this Friday actually kind of did a poll, asking how many people were from Glendale, how many people were from outside Glendale. And it seemed like the attendees were more from outside Glendale than they were from Glendale, so... Which is, which is a great thing, because we're drawing in different crowds, which then hopefully end up also visiting our restaurants and spending money in our city, and so... But I think those, you know, those two series are wonderful. I think we have one this Wednesday at Verdugo Park that's left, another on Thursday at Partridge Plaza. And the library series is continuing, I think at least for another month. So I'm inviting the public to join in. There was a lot of dancing and music and a lot of community love. I have several appointments or appointees to commissions I'd like to nominate.
Please go ahead.
Sona Tatians for the Commission on the Status of Women. She is an attorney, but has also been very involved in the community and very much cares about women's issues and has a track record of that. Joseph Kaskanyan for the Design Review Board. He has a background in reviewing codes, because his family's in the construction business. He's also been a very active member of our community. Marina Manukian for the Community Development Block Grant. Again, a very active member of our community who understands our different nonprofits. She's also an attorney. And then Hakop Jack Mavian for the Audit Committee. He has a finance background, and so I think he would be bringing a wealth of knowledge to that committee. And then I have three items I'd like to ask for a second on. The first one, I'll need a second on, is looking at converting Lot 15 into a mini-park in South Glendale, which would cater to our residents in all these buildings in the downtown area who currently have no nearby parks or green spaces. This would be an extremely inexpensive way of utilizing our current asset to add a much-needed park in the area. The open lot is located on Orange between Wilson and California. Two doors down from that lot, we have a city lot structure, which already provides parking. So there's, you know, parking that we're necessarily taking away. And so I'd like staff to come back with both a feasibility study as well as a discussion on motion options for us to convert that open-air parking lot into a mini-park.
Do I have a second there?
Thank you. The second item is to add youth seats to two of our commissions. I'd like us to add youth seats to our Parks, Recreations, and Community Services Commission, as well as the Arts and Culture Commission. I think it's important for us to have the voice of our youth in the decision-making rooms. And I think this process can be easily done, given that our Sustainability Commission and our Commission on the Status of Women already have that. So I would hope that we can just replicate the systems that we have in place and perhaps engage GUSD in a partnership. So I want to make sure that the students that are attending our schools and GCC are well-aware of the programs, and it's not just students that are following City Hall already. So I'd need a second for that one.
Yeah, excuse me, I'm happy to second that. Maybe throw in transportation and parking? Without knowing kind of what this, what this implies, as far as burden on staff, vetting people, and all the rest of it. I mean, everything else being equal, transportation is another good one that I think young people would be excited to be involved with.
Mayor Kasakian, Mayor City Council, Councilmembers Satryan and Brotman, when we bring a report back, we'll definitely include the impacts to our resources and what it will take to accomplish your desire.
And then I just, I want to make sure that, you know, these are non-voting members. They're just contributing to the discussion. And then the third item was actually brought to my attention by a resident in the Adams Hill area. At Palmer Park, we have a community garden which has a lot of unused space. I actually went and took a look at that area. If we reconfigure the space we use, we can easily convert the unused space to create a small dog park for the neighborhood. This is an issue, actually, that I had brought up when I was at the Parks Commission, and I know that then-Councilmember Kasakian had brought to the City Council. There's already a gate in place. We would just need to put a fence separating the garden from the dog park. I personally understand how important this is as somebody that doesn't have a backyard and has a dog for those that don't have the green space available for their family members. And so I know that there's an RFP, we're going to put out an RFP for Lot 11. And so I'd like the consultant to also look at, potentially looking at, converting that unused space to a dog park. And since Mayor Kasakian was the one that brought up the dog park, it was his idea that brought Lot 11. Mr. Kasakian, if I can get a second?
I would second that. For me, it's more important to have a dog park than the specific location of it. So I would be more than happy to.
Thank you so much.
Okay. Thank you.
Okay. Council, yeah, Councilmember Brotman and then Councilmember Devine.
Sorry, my head was turned that way.
That's okay.
Okay. So, two things, yeah. One is, I just wanted to thank staff, actually, two groups. One is the Economic Development Group. I got the Choose Glendale newsletter, maybe yesterday or the day before, and I read through it, and I thought it was really great. I think that's got a lot more rich content than I remember in the past, I think. It mentioned two restaurant openings, Massey's Kebab, which I've been looking forward to. And another one is, I'm forgetting right now, a, like a Taiwanese tea shop at Brand, and where is that?
I believe California.
In California, yeah, good location. Anyway, it's nice to see that. And it was just a lot of good information in there about arts and culture events, movies, you know, things, not just that the city does. So shout out to them, thank you, keep it up. I also am enjoying the GWP update called "From the Source", which has also, I think, got gotten richer over time and a lot more good information on that. So anybody that doesn't get these, I don't know exactly how you sign up for them, but I really think they're worth reading. I always am learning new things. So that's number one. Number two is also on the subject of commissions. I think we're looking at some situations where we have people that are terming out and having to step down from commissions. And I spoke to Mr. Garcia about this, and apparently, we have, in the past, taken away our ability to override a term limit with a finding of, you know, special, special need to keep somebody on. I think that's what she told me, right?
I think the language in the code prior to the most recent amendment was, if it was council found it was in the best interest of the city.
That we could or we could not? I thought we removed that.
We did, that's what I'm saying. The language in the code before the amendment in 2019 said the council could, you know, could avoid the term limit by making a finding that it was in the best interest of the city. And that language, as you note, is no longer part of our code.
That language is no longer part of our code. And I would like to see if we could add that back in. We also have, I guess our term limit is across multiple commissions. So we might have somebody that has served on multiple commissions and still, you know, wants to serve, provides a lot of value. I'd hate to see them kind of forced to not participate in that. So I would, I would ask if we could revisit that, that code, specifically that clause that gives us an opportunity to override.
I would second that, if we can include in that a revisiting of the entire appointment process. I've never been a fan of the one-to-one politicization of the appointment process. If you would be willing to include that, I'd be amicable to having it revisited.
Yeah, and, and we've talked about that in the past, and I think that that's, that's something that we should do. I think it's a little more complicated, but yes, if we can bring those two together, maybe. If it doesn't slow down the first one too much. I think the first one's a lot, a lot more straightforward, but I'll leave it to staff to figure out how to do it best.
Is it possible for us to do two separate ones, just so we can?
You can, you can second, you can second Councilmember Brotman's request for a term limit.
I would just note, I think Councilmember Brotman's correct. The first, the first request will take less time to bring back. So if you want to expedite that, I'd have to bring it back.
I would like to, yeah, if we could separate them, get that one back quickly.
And work on the other one.
Okay.
Okay, then I'll, I'll second that, and then do you want to make a motion for?
And I'll...
Yes, I would like us to revisit the appointment process for our boards and commissioners.
Okay, and I'll second that.
To move away from a process that is a one-to-one appointment where each councilperson gets appointed, to have panels like we had at one point, but also to explore and see how other cities make their appointments and come back with the best practices.
Okay, I'm seconding that. Thanks. That's it?
Okay.
Okay, thank you. I just, just for a second, want to congratulate and thank all the HOAs and neighbors and the neighborhoods that participated in National Night Out. It was, I think it was a really successful evening. I want to thank the Police Department for their contributions, their visibility. The Fire Department was there always, kids love to see them. I also want to give a personal thanks to Officer Celine Corrales, who accompanied me and was so helpful. Mr. Emroni had given us the pails for the recycling of our organics, and we took along 10 pails for each visit that we made. We made five. And she held on to those until I announced, and then there was this mad rush at this poor officer. She almost got trampled, I think, a couple of times. But they were, it was a very successful opportunity, and for us to take those pails, it just showed me that people are really, and our residents are really interested in recycling their organics. And I wanted to say that if you were there and you didn't get a pail, that you can always go to glandarecycles.com and request a pail so that you can start in our, our recycling efforts to keep those, those food products and organics from our landfill. So, thank you.
All right, thank you very much. First of all, I want to remind everyone that, and parents already know this, but school starts again next week. So for those who are out there who will be driving or walking with their schools, preferably walking, you know, take your time, be patient. The first week is always frustrating. The city is making every effort to work with the school sites to ensure that we have a smooth start to the school year. But in general, always be careful. Sometimes the people that drive the worst around those school campuses are the parents themselves who are doing the drop-offs and the pickup. So please be aware of that, and wishing all our returning students good luck and a successful academic year. National Night Out, I want to thank my colleagues all for filling in and attending and representing the city at all of these events. I unfortunately was unable to be there because I had to travel out of town to visit with family. But it was great to see all of your posts, all the smiling faces in all of the neighborhoods and all parts of the city, and the folks who came out to celebrate the city and each other. There were a couple of events that I, one, I was able to make it back in time for, which was a screening of a documentary titled "Motherland". It was by Vik Garami, who is an activist journalist, documentarian. He has a radio program on KPFK. It was a documentary about the ongoing human rights violations, the ethnic cleansing happening in Artsakh. It was held at the Lemley Theaters here and very well-attended. I want to thank everyone I know, my colleagues, Mr. Galanian, attended the screening. And I want to congratulate the filmmaker and his team on an excellent job. It's a story that's not really spoken about enough. I have said this a number of times, to care about what's happening in Ukraine and ignore what's happening in other parts of the country. All human suffering deserves our attention. We have to strive for a more peaceful world where we can all live together in peace and not be worried about someone dropping bombs on us and cleansing and ethnically cleansing people from their indigenous lands. Asian Hall of Fame had their, an event at the Alex Theater, very well-attended. Very fortunate to have them have it here in the city. It was the same day as the, also as the art exhibits at the Central Library. So a lot of excellent things happening for our Asian-American residents and the community and folks from neighboring areas, for those who came out, we appreciate them visiting. For those who live here who attended, we hope to do more things and support more such programs and events. Couple of things that I'd like to ask my colleagues to see if there's a second for. When I was, when I first assumed the mayorship, I asked that we look into a program. And today's, we, this afternoon, we had a very long discussion about the pension obligations, the unfunded liabilities, where the city is headed financially in the future. And it was, it was not the most uplifting discussion, because there was a lot to absorb. For those who are here in the audience, it's great to see you here, and we hope to have another discussion that, those of you who are here, you can go back and watch it online, but we hope to perhaps have another discussion, maybe in the evening. So everyone is aware of the challenges that we have to face when we come up with, we're faced with decisions as to what to finance, what not to finance, what we can pay for, what we can afford to pay for. But in that spirit, I would like to see, and I don't think many people in the city are aware of this. When I talk to folks about what's happening in person, our pension obligations, many people oftentimes are surprised to hear about what we have to face. So, in order to have better engaged, better informed citizens, I had mentioned that I'd like to have the city look into creating a civic academy program, something like the Police Citizens Academy, where over the course of eight to 10 weeks, citizens could volunteer. It would be open to anyone who would like to attend to complete a course program, after which, the completion of which, they will get a better understanding of how departments are run, the structure of each department, the finances of each department, the finances of the city as a whole, the challenges that we're facing. And hopefully, it will be also a breeding ground for future applicants to boards and commissions, and why not even council and other elected offices? I don't think it will be a huge cost to the city, but the return of investment on training individuals in our city to understand what we face as staff, as council people, as residents, is far outweighs anything else that would prevent us from doing it. So I'd like to see if anyone would be interested in seconding that request.
I'd love to.
Thank you.
I think it's a great program.
And in addition to that, I had also spoken about having our council come outside of City Hall, go to neighborhoods. Oftentimes, we hear the term "far north of Glendale", or the south side of the city is ignored. I've been holding office hours weekly for as often as I can. I've missed one or two weeks here or there because of traveling, because of other appointments. But I've met in the north part of the city every Friday from 9:00 to 10:00 a.m. at the Coffee Bean in Montrose. Every Tuesday from 9:00 to 10:00 a.m. in Adams Hill. The last month or so, I've been listening to the residents there. And the one thing I'll tell you is people come out, people do have concerns. What I'd like to see is us bring back that city council in your neighborhood idea that we had before. It doesn't have to be a city council meetings. In the past, it's been kind of a listening session, a town hall-type environment. I would like to bring that back, so the residents have an opportunity to come and meet with us, and we can talk to them, and we can hear from them in their neighborhood. So I'd like a second on that. Please give us a second.
I'll second that.
Thank you very much. Also, the last thing I would like to request is for us to consider adjourning the City Council... Oh, well, before I make that, I know that we went through the election cycle this last time, and we had, I had pushed for public financing of campaigns, and we fell and rested on a compromised position of at least paying for the ballot statements of all candidates who ran. I would like a report back. It doesn't have to be a council report, it can be a memo as to what the fiscal impact of that was, what the cost of it was to the city overall. And once I receive that memo, I will like to, in the future, revisit the idea of campaign finances and see how we can build upon. Hopefully, what will, the memorandum will show us was the success of that program. And I'm holding off on making that additional request, because I know that there's been a lot already placed on staff's plate. Now with that, I would like to request that we adjourn this evening's meeting in memory of someone who gave a lot to the city of Glendale, a truly remarkable and kind individual who passed on June, I believe, 23rd, but we are making this request now, and that's Dr. Don Empy. Don Empy, for those who don't know, was a longtime Deputy Superintendent of Glendale Unified School District. He was born in Oregon in 1932 and obtained educational doctorate from the University of Oregon. He was a huge Ducks fan. He served as Glendale's Deputy Superintendent from 1976 to 2002. He was influential in overseeing the district's instructional programs as Glendale experienced many language and cultural changes, was noted for his expertise facilitating district and school strategic planning efforts, and was instrumental in helping open Clark Magnet High School. Don was also very active in Glendale community, serving on the Glendale Coordinating Council and the Board of Directors of several community organizations, and was active in La Cre Santa Presbyterian Church. He was a founding member and president of the Character and Ethics Project and the founder of the Annual Youth Leadership Conference. Don was a devoted husband, father, and grandfather. He survived by his wife of 66 years, and had three daughters, many grandchildren and great-grandchildren, a brother, sister, and several nieces and nephews. I got to know Mr. Empy when I was in Glendale High School, and the city at the time had a youth advisory committee, which I had the honor and privilege of serving on, and he was a liaison to that from the school district. And along the way on many other things, including character and ethics and the Youth Leadership Council. So my condolences to his family, to his loved ones, and to everyone whose lives he touched. Thank you. So with that, let's move on to the rest of our meeting. What is next? Does staff have any comments?
No, thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Okay, so now we have the community event announcements, or the three-minute oral communication portion. This is for those individuals who wish to forego their ability to address the council for five minutes. So with that, I'd like to call up our first speaker, Ms. Tamara Mofsesian. You will have three minutes.
(speaking in Glindale) 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 (speaking in Glindale)
Thank you, Ms. Mofssasian. I appreciate you taking the time down here and addressing the council. I would respond to each of those comments individually, but for the interest of time, I will honor your request for an appointment. You'd be more than welcome to make such an appointment, and I'd be happy to sit down and answer all your concerns and some of those comments, which I felt are a little bit inaccurate, not a little bit, a lot, very inaccurate, one by one. Next, we have Oscar Ramirez. Mr. Ramirez, you'll have three minutes.
Hi, my name is Oscar Ramirez, and I've been a residence of, a resident of Glendale for 59 years. I live on Woodbury Road, but my house fronts Woodbury Road and also Luden Drive. I put my garbage out on Luden Drive because all I have to do is take it down from the curb, as opposed to if I have it on Woodbury Road, I have to roll it down about 20 feet. Sometimes those garbage pails weigh 50, 60 pounds. I've fallen before, and so I've been doing, putting my garbage on Luden Drive. The city has picked it up for seven years now, okay? In June, they stopped picking up my garbage, but the city continues to charge me for picking up the garbage. I complained on July 1st to the city council and the mayor, and somebody called the city and they had my trash picked up all at once, but it hadn't been picked up for four weeks. Now, it hasn't been picked up for six weeks, and I'm just wondering, why can't the city continue to pick up my garbage on Luden Drive, where it's very convenient for me to just take it off the curb as opposed to rolling it down for 20 feet?
Mr. Ramirez, I don't have the answer to that question as to why they can't, but it seems as though if it was picked up before, we'll certainly look into seeing what the issues are, and if there's a way we can accommodate it, I would certainly support that. Mr. Amrani, would you be able to communicate with and talk to Mr. Ramirez about this or have your staff contact him as soon as possible?
Absolutely, Mr. Ramirez.
All right. Mr. Ramirez, do you have Mr. Ramirez's contact info?
Yes, I do.
Okay. Mr. Ramirez, would that satisfy you?
Sure, as long as they pick up my garbage.
All right, thank you very much. Thank you for coming down. Next is Ramela Eraghi. You have three minutes, Ms. Eraghi.
So, I think today's meeting is most, ladies and gentlemen of council members, good afternoon, actually, good evening. Yeah, today is less boring. They're crowded here, so it's less boring, so. So, yeah, because I have my folks here, so they came to support me. I'm here to talk again about affordable housing. So, in this meeting, I want to start with a story, a story of my neighbor where I live at south of Glendale, south of Colorado Boulevard. They had to move out of city of Glendale just because they couldn't afford living in this city. They're parents of a 15-year-old daughter, and they merely concerned about that the daughter has to be separated from their, from her friends here and who are well-behaved kids growing up in an Armenian community and where there's a strong and rich cultural culture. They wished for their daughter to finish her high school here in city of Glendale, which didn't happen, and they were worried about the, about that the move will cause her daughter, cause her daughter mental health, emotional distress. And, and also having, and the daughter's going to have, having a hard time to adopt to the new environment of the new cultural, in that new neighborhood. Armenian consists of 40% plurality of the city of Glendale due to their rich and unicultural heritage, dates back 4,000 years. Armenian contributed great, great deal to this city. Their humble and polite characteristics, as well as constructive spirit, have, have made this city safe, beautiful, clean, and architecturally significant. Armenian business contributed a great deal of capital for this cause. Of course, I'm not going to ignore the fact that other pluralities made same contribution to this city. Armenian residents have been forced to move out, out of this great city because of the affordability issues, rent, high utilities, taxes, and et cetera. Armenian parents are great parents. They are dedicated to their children.
Ms. Eraghi, do you have a long, do you, will you be able to wrap up in the next 30 seconds? I'll grant you, continue. Let's see how long it takes.
Right. Armenian parents are great parents, and they are dedicated to their children. Armenian mothers are a symbol of love and care, and they care for their parents and parents, they're all, the family helping each other raising the kids, so they don't want to move out to this city. They want to, so, so with all this said, you're telling us, you're dictating us to move out of the city of Glendale, so there, where we already built these strong cultural values here. With all being said, affordable housing is a great solution to this community, which is a culturally rich community, and I want to keep it intact. So, we don't have to leave this great city. I, as an Armenian who's been living in the city of Glendale for 30 years, contributed culture and contributed culture, contributed culture to this city, I don't want to live in this city. I want to get old, I want to die in the city. Don't make us to leave.
Ms. Ramela, thank you very much. You were given an additional minute for your comments, and I think we all get the point of it. I appreciate you coming in and sharing your views with us. Thank you. All right. Next item on the agenda, moving past the three-minute oral communications portion. What is the first item before the council for consideration today?
Item A is action items, A to A, Glendale Water Empower, Regarding Glendale Water Empower, GWP Energy Risk Management Policy and Trading Authority Policy. One, motion improving amendments to GWP Energy Risk Management Policy. Two, motion improving amendments to the GWP Trading Authority Policy.
All right. Mr. Galanian?
Good evening, Mayor Sack, Member of City Council. This is an annual presentation and effort by GWP, asking council to approve amendments to their energy risk management and training authority policies, and I'm going to invite Howard Wong, our energy risk manager, to give you that presentation.
Good evening, Mayor, council members. Howard Wong, Energy Risk Manager for GWP. So, annually, the GWP Energy Risk Management Committee reviews and evaluates the GWP risk policies and recommends necessary updates in response to changes in the energy market that affects GWP. Also recommends further clarification of policy and language and aligns any organizational changes. Updates to the Energy Risk Management Policy and Trading Authority Policy must be approved by city council. The current Energy Risk Management Policy and Trading Authority Policy were approved in June 2020 and June 2021, respectively. The Energy Risk Management Policy is designed to establish the framework to manage the risks that are inherent in the wholesale energy operations and markets that GWP participates in. The policy sets risk management objectives, governance structure, responsibilities, scope as business activities, and lists guidelines, policy documents, and the GWP Risk Registry. The changes for the Energy Risk Management Policy that I bring into you, the organizational chart is updated to mirror any changes to the Energy Risk Management Committee members and their titles. Under the section, GWP Energy Risk Management Committee Structure, the titles for the city of Glendale Director of Finance and Information Technologies updated. The GWP Assistant General Manager and Utility Finance Manager were corrected, and the role of GWP's Chief Assistant General Manager is added to the committee under the same status as the Assistant General Manager. This last change is in anticipation for future, potential future staff changes within GWP. Also, the GWP Chief Assistant General Manager is also added under the same risk responsibilities as a GWP Assistant General Manager. The Utility Finance Manager, previously, the Power Contracts Manager had the responsibility to manage the counterparty approval process, credit, and collateral management, and now we've moved that to the Utility Finance Manager, and that is due to the Finance Manager role being vacant for some time, but that, that was recently filled. The GWP Trading Authority Policy defines authority granted by city council to the city manager and general manager to execute energy-related transactions and to delegate trading authority and functions to GWP staff within their defined limits. The policy defines commodities and products that can be transacted, authorize lead time and term for each transaction, authorize maximum price and volume. It outlines counterparty contract and credit requirements, the process for approving new commodities, products, or locations, intentions regarding hedging and speculating, and other relevant factors associated with due diligence and authorizing transactions to be executed. The changes to the Trading Authority Policy, trading on and off premises, before, we required traders to only trade and execute transactions on premise, but recently, the city adopted hybrid work policy, and the policy is, is updated to reflect that. Deal capture adds, this adds excessive deal capture violations in the energy trading and risk management system that will be reported and discussed by the Energy Risk Management Committee. The next section, California ISO Transaction Limits, removes available limits for ancillary service awards and interscheduling coordinator energy transactions under this authority matrix. Transaction authority to execute ancillary services is removed due to GWP's inability to offer reserve services for regulation up and down, spin and non-spin, due to our generation being located outside of the California ISO. Interscheduling coordinator energy transactions, it's, those transactions are moved through the California ISO but are really considered bilateral transactions and should be instead monitored in accordance with Section 4.1, Bilateral Electric Power and Transmission The last few changes, Transportation Firmness. This language in this section is clarified to read that natural gas purchases or sales using non-firm transportation must be pre-approved by the city manager or general manager. Ideally, all natural gas purchased, purchased to run Grayson or Magnolia Plant will not be based on its, will not be, will be based on its priority level, so it's not curtailed. However, at times, it may be necessary to use non-firm or lower priority based on market or other reasons, and if that's the case, it would require additional approval by the city manager or general manager. The next section, Carbon Allowance and Carbon Emission Offset Transaction Limits. Under this section, the policy update identifies the types of California carbon allowance and carbon emission offset products of CCA, GCCO, CCO3, and CCO8 approved for trading. This allows for better tracking in the energy trading and risk management system. And the last update, Sanctions for Operational Scheduling Tagging Transmission Errors. The updates in this section now address errors made while performing operational scheduling or transmission processes. Previously, the policy only addressed policy violations. This update allows errors and/or policy violations reportable and discussed at the Energy Risk Management Committee. And that is it. Any questions for me?
Do my colleagues have questions? Councilmember Brotman?
Yeah. There's one item on here, under the GWP Trading Authority Policy that wasn't in the staff report, so I didn't ask you about it during the briefing. Deal capture. Was that added? Why was it added, and what does it mean?
I think I just excluded that from the staff report. It wasn't really notable to include. I did go back and include it on the slides just to mention here at city council. All it means is that whenever a trade is executed by our traders, we have a risk management system that we have to enter those trades in, and that flows all the way down from trading to scheduling, all the way to the settlements and invoicing process. So, we would just want to make sure that all the trades that are being transacted are put into the system timely, and if a trader ends up, because there are numerous transactions that's conducted on a daily basis, so we want to make sure that we address any type of excessive mistakes made when entering those, those into the system.
Okay. Thank you.
Apologies for that.
All right. Any other questions, comments?
I have a comment.
House member, Al Sotirian.
For me, it all looks good. I am interested in the, in making sure that the assistant city manager, assistant general manager position incorporate expertise in clean energy when you're drafting the bulletin for the job, but that's the only comment that I have.
Yeah. Our policy has objectives that address that, and we want to make sure that we, you know, Glendale reaches their goal for that, so I'm sure that's in consideration.
Okay.
House member, do you like?
So, I see a lot of this as a succession plan, which I think is a good thing, because I think that's something that, that we've kind of skirted for a while, so this is a good thing in this, this report.
Correct. I want to make sure that whenever the policies are brought to city council, we're very transparent on our objectives, ensuring that we reach our goals, and I don't want to just bring some minor changes to the council and waste the valuable time of everybody. some minor changes to City Council and waste the valuable time of everybody, so I want to make sure it's substantial.
Appreciate that, thank you. So is this a note in file, or do we need a motion? I'll move approval of the amendments.
Is there a second?
I'll second it.
All right, with that, let's have a roll call on this item.
Councilmember Asadriyan.
Yes.
Brotman.
Yes.
Divine.
Yes.
Najarian. And Merrick Socken.
Yes.
Yes.
And do I need another motion for the Trading Authority as well? Were they made together? I made, okay, good. Roll call.
Were they made together?
Both items were read into the record.
I thought I just made the, yeah.
If you want to do a separate motion, just for clarity.
Sure, let's, let's do that for the record, so we're clear on it.
I just did the first one, yeah.
I'll make the motion.
I already did.
Oh, you did, I'll second it.
All right, let's have a roll call on item eight A one, eight A two.
Councilmember Asadriyan.
Yes.
Brotman.
Yes.
Divine.
Yes.
Najarian. And Merrick Socken.
Yes, thank you. Can you please read item eight, be into the record?
To the Attorney regarding review and reconsideration of temporary cap on fees charged by third-party food delivery applications, one motion to note in file, two, resolution repealing resolutions number 2063, and terminating the emergency public order imposing a temporary limit on commission fees charged by third-party delivery applications on businesses in Glendale. Three, motion providing direction to staff.
Mr. Mayor, Members of Council, Mr. Mayor, you asked for this item to consider the emergency order that was adopted by the council in 2020 in response to COVID after the county health department closed in-person dining. The primary, one of the predominant methods for delivering food was through third-party delivery apps such as DoorDash and Grubhub, and as a result, many cities were encountered with a situation where the fees were maybe deemed to be excessive, some cases ranging from 15 to 30%. So the council in 2020 adopted a fee cap on all fees, not just the delivery fee, but the processing fees, and given that the in-person dining restriction has been lifted since 2021, you were being asked whether or not to, you want to repeal that order and to basically go back to the status quo as it was before COVID, since dining rooms are open at full capacity and have been for quite some time. So that's, that's items before you?
Sure.
And would take direction, or there is actually a resolution to rescind that order as part of this item, so you can take that action tonight if you want.
So, you know, we, we came up with this as a solution temporarily for when restaurants were not allowed to have in-person dining, as was stated. Since then, I think that anyone who's been out to have dinner anywhere has seen that there's a return and a resurgence of dining all over Los Angeles, and our restaurants are doing well. We hope that they continue to do well. So given that, I would like to see us rescind this and then, you know, basically go back to how it was before, because we obviously don't have the same restrictions that we had on restaurants as we did before, and it doesn't appear as though we're headed in that direction right now, despite some of the rumors that people will call us about. Now there's even this talk of the monkey pox and everything else. I think that we're, we're okay, or at least until we aren't. I'd like us to rescind this emergency order. Yes, Councilmember Divine.
My question is, have we had any outreach to restaurants to see if they're in favor or not of this rescinding of the cap? How do they?
And as part of this report, because we wanted to bring it back as soon as we can. I do know, again, as we noted in the report, Pasadena, Burbank, and LA's, either they rescinded them or they automatically expired once the county orders were deemed to allow full, full capacity. So since the report has been posted, no, we haven't received any, any feedback at all.
Okay, okay, just wondered.
Mike?
Yeah. So I think that there was, I think another issue that came up was the way we did the cap. We made it a single cap on all fees as opposed to distinguishing between delivery fees and, I guess, other services that are provided by the, by the companies.
That's correct.
And I understand probably several of us, you know, heard a message about Grubhub in particular, I guess, providing more of a broader service to their customers. It includes like back office and other.
And advertising.
Advertising and other things, and to have a cap that covers all those seems counterproductive. So I guess our options are what? We can, we can modify that aspect of it and keep the underlying.
Certainly true. You can keep, keep the delivery fee cap and take out, because actually, the definition of the delivery fee is just for the delivery, but the 15% cap is based on all services. That's certainly an option that's available to you as well.
Well, my view would be definitely change that. The only reason I am slightly hesitating, I mean, I don't like us to kind of interfere with, you know, third-party pricing unless there's a compelling reason, but, but one thing that I would really be interested in knowing first is, has this impacted in any way the services that these providers are willing to offer in Glendale? Like, has this cap had any impact on any of these companies to the extent where they've said, you know, I'm gonna, I'm gonna, you know, not do business in Glendale, or I'm going to curtail some of my activities, or something like that? Because it's just, it's an interesting question. If it has had no impact, then clearly, you know, it kind of tells me, like, we have a little bit of a monopoly or oligopoly situation here, and they are perfectly able to operate in this market profitably with the cap. And if that's the case, you know, maybe, maybe there are grounds to keep it in place. So that's just, you know, I'm not saying I want to keep it in place necessarily, but I am interested in, in hearing whether there's been any impact, either here and any other jurisdiction, from these kinds of moves that, that I guess many cities made. I don't know if you have anything you can tell us about that. I think you, you said in the briefing, you know, we really don't have that information.
We don't at this time.
I, I think that you raise very valid points, Councilmember Brotman. I do think that would be a report perhaps to come back and with some information from economic development and with outreach that they do to restaurants, and perhaps they can reach out to some of these third-party services. But for the time being, I think, given that a lot of our neighboring cities have removed that or it has expired due to the end of the emergency, for us to keep something that we put in place during this emergency period, and seeing that not only are many restaurants back, but there's also, many of them are continuing to benefit from additional seating areas, they have far more patrons, it seems to be that things, the purpose under which this was initiated is no longer the case. It would be fine to have that discussion at a later council meeting, but for now, I think it would be appropriate to end the, end the order that was in place during COVID.
Would you be willing to do this in two steps? In other words, right now, just modify that one element of the order that, where we limit the fees charged for all services, not just food delivery? That would be one thing. I think it's kind of a no-brainer. I didn't know we had that. And then just get more information about, you know, the perspective of restaurants and of the third-party food delivery apps, whether there really has been any impact. I would just like a little more information before we do that. We can, it shouldn't be like a, a long time to have that come back. Would you be open to that?
No, I'd be open, certainly I'd be open to it. I'm just wondering, would it be complicated to decouple these items at this time? What would, what would staff recommend based on what you're hearing from council? As to, you're getting a sense that there's council members who want more information. At the same time, we, we don't want to disrupt the market anymore than we have. We obviously had reasons for doing it during a crisis when restaurants were not allowed to operate. So what is your recommendation?
Mr. Mayor, so there's a couple of ways to do it. I think it's probably easier to, it's easy to decouple it from the delivery fee from the other fees, because they're actually, the wording of the, of the resolution that established the cap had a very clear definition of delivery fee, so you can, if the council wants to, you can just make, have that fee, that cap apply to that fee and no other fees, and then we can bring the other aspects of it back. And the only thing I would note, if you repeal it all and you want to bring part of it back, you might get some challenges from, from the third-party delivery app companies. So it might be one suggestion to do it in two steps if you don't want, if you want to subsequently bring that back. And the other, or the other option is to just repeal it now and then ask for part of it to come back. It's really, it's really a policy call, but there is certainly a mechanism to just modify it at this time to just apply to the delivery fee, and then, and then we can bring, we can have economic development do the, do the outreach and the research and bring that back to you, and you can decide, make a final decision on the delivery fee part of it.
Well, I asked for this to come back, but certainly I'm not going to necessarily make the motion as the chair of the meeting, so I'll defer to what the rest of my colleagues suggest, unless we are at an impasse, in which case I could pass the gavel. So if any of my colleagues have a suggestion or an idea, I'm open to this.
I'd really like to see some feedback.
Yeah, I think we need, I think we need more information as well.
I would go with. I actually have a question. Have we heard from these third-party?
From the apps?
Yeah.
There was one.
Yeah, we did read, yeah, from one, from representatives from Grubhub.
Who provide those additional services.
And that was a third option. You could just continue this whole thing until we do the research, or you can decouple it now. Those are probably the two options, based on where we're, where we're hearing you all are at.
And Mr. Mayor, if I may, the research is gonna take a little bit of time, as you can imagine, so.
I mean, this is not, you know, a huge deal for me, but I would just prefer just take it in two steps, just decouple and, and just modify that language about what we're capping, so we're not capping other fees, we're only capping the delivery fees, and then, and then come back. I mean, I don't think there's been any disruption, as far as I know. So if it takes another couple of months, we come back and we get rid of it at that time.
So it's not, for me, it's not as much about some of the traditional, the ones that everyone probably has heard of, whether it's Uber Eats, DoorDash, Grubhub, but there are other small businesses that rely on a similar model that cater to at-home kitchens, individuals who cook in their home, which they're allowed to do now by state law, and then have deliveries of those foods or pickup of those foods, which are operated through an app. There was, there's a very important one here in Glendale. I mean, just as a plug to whoever there, Dish Divvy, if any of you know, and I know that they were partially impacted by it or were worried about the impacts of it initially. You know, again, we had to do it as an emergency order, because as I stated then, we have certain homegrown restaurants that I would have hated to have seen die out or disappear during COVID because of the restrictions placed on indoor dining through county health, Department of Health institutions, like whether the one that's going to have their standalone restaurant now, whether it's Massey's Kebab, who only had a one location in the mall, and the food court and the entire mall was closed, right? Or others, and they were purely relying on delivery and pickup. So my intention was initially to answer the challenges of COVID, not necessarily get in and regulate that market. That is why I wanted to have this repealed. I'm certainly open to the idea of placing caps or restrictions, depending on the impacts it has on restaurants, but, you know, the, if, it sounds like there may be some direction or council is wanting to have more information. How, what is the timeline, do you think you anticipate, the range of time that would take to have something like this come back?
Mr. Mayor, Members of City Council, I will have to consult with our economic development team, and we'll, we'll do the outreach as soon as we can. It all depends on what, when, and how, and the responses that we get from the service delivery folks and restaurants.
Yes.
Can I recommend another alternative? What if we remove the caps today? And if we want to look at this as a policy for the future, when they do the report, they have all of that, then we can come back with a policy of our own in the future for this.
Yeah, good. I thought what I heard was that maybe a little bit problematic in that we could get a challenge. I don't, I don't really understand why.
I think it's just, it's, I should maybe qualify what I said. It's probably just a little bit more difficult to reinstitute it, but not, not legally impossible. That's, that's certainly an option we could look at.
Maybe we look at the, we look at what caps work better. And if it.
Don't look at me, I'm just running the meeting, so.
Somebody wants to make, if you want to make that motion, Council, Councilmember Socken.
One more question, if I might. If we're concerned about this, I don't know what you call this kind of delivery of home-cooked meals, is there also a way to kind of carve that out?
We'll look at it, we have to look.
That, you know, what we're talking about is cap on delivery from brick-and-mortar restaurants?
We can certainly look at that.
I mean, that, maybe that would just take care of that problem, and.
Right, we'll look at that when we bring it back, whatever, whatever options we bring back.
Okay.
Okay, so it sounds like we're not going to have much consensus this evening, so let's have, the direction to staff is to look into the impacts of a lot of the council requests. Decoupling the services from the delivery cap, feedback from the restaurants as to how this has impacted them or if it has impacted them, feedback from the third-party delivery, you know, companies that are providing these services, as to their ability to operate within the city and what impacts it has had. What else am I missing?
That's a carve-out.
Home delivery?
Yeah, home delivery.
Or homemade.
Homemade. Right.
Goods delivery. Everything's home delivery, that's why you even order, or what else?
Those, those are the items.
Okay, all right. There we have it. Is there anyone who wants to make a motion for that, for staff to look into those and come back with information?
I'll make that motion. I would just add that if, if we want, if some aspects of that take longer, we could just have staff come back with that carve-out, that simple carve-out, get that done, because I think that's just a few words.
I think after, after Ms. Galan has had a chance to confer with staff, we'll have a sense of how long the items will take to come back. We can give you an idea, and then if you want to bring back parts of it earlier, that won't take that long, we can do that.
Okay.
Does that work?
That would be my motion.
I'll second it.
All right, Mr. Clerk, may we have a, or acting clerk, rather, may we have the roll call, please?
Councilmember Asadriyan.
Yes.
Brotman.
Yes.
Divine.
Yes.
Najarian. And Merrick Socken.
Yes. Item eight C, please.
Police Department regarding request regarding acceptance of grant funding from the United States Department of Homeland Security, 2021 Urban Area Security Initiatives Grant Program One, resolution to accept grant funds in the amount of $1,454,709, and authorize the City Manager is designated to execute an agreement with the City of Los Angeles for the award of funds under the fiscal year 21 UASI Grant Program. Two, resolution to dispense with competitive bidding and authorize Deputy Director of Finance purchasing to issue purchase order with Platinum Stimulators Incorporated for, one, the procurement of flight simulator equipment in the amount not to exceed $209,000 for the initial purchase, and, two, therefore for the life of the equipment, if the funds for the continued maintenance, support, updates, upgrades, and licensing of the simulator are appropriated with the police department's budget and approved by the City Council as part of an annual citywide budget process. And, three, resolution to appropriate $1,454,709 from the Urban Area Security Initiatives Grant Program, grant revenue, and $34,150 from asset forfeiture, public safety.
Chief.
Good evening, Merrick Socken, Members of Council, Carl Pavlidis, Police Chief. As was read into the record, I'm here to discuss the acceptance of the Urban Area Strategic Initiative 2021 Grant. This is something that we do with you every year or so, depending on the cycle that the City of Los Angeles kind of controls as we, as we go through this process. This year, the City of Glendale has been awarded $1,454,709. That will fall roughly into three buckets. $200,000 is designated for the Fire Department for urban search and rescue equipment, $254,000 for the Police Department for temporary fencing for crowd control and/or managing major events, barricades for managing major events, and for a flight simulator to prepare our air support unit and to facilitate the response of our support unit in terms of training. And then there is $1 million for a TDMA system. Don't ask me what that stands for, because I always forget, but in essence, what it does is it takes our interoperable radio system, and it doubles the capacity of two of our sites, something that's being worked on throughout the, throughout the ICI system as grant funding and other funding sources become available to, to do that, so it enhances the capacity, as I like to tell everybody, it's like post 9/11, they talked about needing an interoperable communication system, that anybody could talk to anybody, and the City of Glendale and its partners have actually achieved that, and now we're in the process of improving that. The Urban Area Strategic Initiative Grant is basically to facilitate regional responses to all hazards, no matter what they are, from everything from cybersecurity to any type of terrorist attack, and all of these support our ability to do that, not only as an individual city, but also as a, as, as a region. only as an individual city, but also as a, as, as a region. So with that, I would request, respectfully request the approval of the, of acceptance of the grant and the purchasing of the equipment. And I'm happy to answer any questions.
Do my colleagues have questions?
I have a question about, and I've asked this one before. We share a helicopter with Burbank. Are we sharing the simulator with them as well?
Yes, we will. And I think probably the unsaid part of that question is, generally, one city takes the lead on UASI grants, and so when we've purchased radio equipment, or I believe we have some mixer panels that are going into the aircraft, those were actually put in for by Burbank and then put into the Joint Air Support Unit. It becomes a, it's, it's a good way to fund a joint regional operation using regional, regional grant funds.
Okay. And who, who actually sits down and does the, the breakdown for each, each of these grants, like each portion?
So, so the Fire Department through LA County Fire Chiefs will work out their arrangements, and then the Police Department through LA County Police Chiefs Association works out kind of what's going to be spent regionally there. And then there's a whole process with an approval authority via the City of Los Angeles with varying voting, with various voting representatives that then approve it on a countywide basis. So it's a, it's an interesting process.
I guess so. Okay. I'll move the item.
Well, I, I.
Oh, you have a question?
I have a question. Yeah. So the decisions on how the funds get allocated, I mean, the specific line items that they get allocated to, that's not, that's done here in Glendale by, right?
No, actually, it has to be approved by the approval authority and the City of Los Angeles through the UASI process.
They approve it, but we say to them, we want, and the reason I'm asking for this is, asking about this is, is, you know, the flight simulator, simulator doesn't strike me as being probably the, the thing that most people would tell you is, is our highest priority. You know, you talk to people, they want traffic control, they want, you know, they want, they want these, these flock cameras so that, you know, we're picking up people that are coming in and, and doing home burglaries, and, you know, that's kind of the stuff that's near and dear to the public's heart, and it's, you know, near and dear to my heart. I wouldn't normally think of a flight simulator as being at the top of our list. So how does that decision get made? How much scope do we have at this point to say, you know, there's this other thing that is probably a better use of our money, let's do that instead of the flight simulator?
So, so we have some limited scope, and so when it comes to the flight simulator, part of this is, we do operate an aviation unit. And so when we're actually operating a helicopter, those have direct operating costs, whether it's fuel, life-limited parts, et cetera. Plus, there are certain things that, that we do, as I consider, a lot of things we do in police work, they are low-frequency but high-risk operations. And so we do focus in on where can we do things to make continuous improvement, to make sure what we're doing is done as safely as possible. And the aviation unit itself provides a lot of value for critical situations, whether that is a pursuit, whether that is a complex tactical situation, the surveillance, the camera systems and the observation platform can replace, you know, well over a dozen officers on the ground. And so being able to do that safely while that might come, not come to the fore on the immediate type of things, is one of the things to do that. And so we have in the past purchased equipment for the aviation unit, including things like cameras, radios, and things that up that, because it supports a regional response to those issues. This also supports that, that regional response to, to those, to those same issues. So what we also try to do is we ladder these things in based on what we see as needs. And so we'll be back here in a few more months with another UASI grant, and we'll be asking for other types of, other types of technology at the same time. So depending what funding sources we have coming through, we're, we're looking at our needs and then, and then asking for them and seeing if we can get them approved.
Okay. I have to let that sink in. I'll let some other people ask questions if you have any.
Any questions?
You asked the question I was asking.
Oh. I just, yeah, I just don't know. I mean, you know, when these things come to us lots of times, it's all baked in, but it just, you know, so what have we been doing up till now without this flight simulator? Have we been training our people?
We, we do the, we do the training actually in the aircraft, and this is something that we've kind of looked at over the long haul, that if there was an opportunity, this would be a good way to reduce the risk of some of the training, because you can do higher-risk operations with minimal risk to crew and, and people on the ground. As I said, you know, one of the things when you operate these types of units, we pay a lot of attention to what happens in other places, and then look for ways to, to do it, to do it better. And so that's, that's why this one is in at this point. Then that also allows us to take the general fund dollars that we spend on our aviation unit and direct those basically to more operational time and reduce the amount of training time, in addition to being able to do some of the things that you would prefer not to do in a, in an aircraft.
Okay. Is there, is there any simulators out there right now in the entire county that our pilots could train on versus us taking, I mean, we're receiving this money as a grant, I get it, it's not coming, but there's also a line in there that says that we will pay for the upkeep and the maintenance, whatever other related expenses there are, and I don't know what they are, but...
In the larger scheme of things, I think the ongoing expenses are going to be, are going to be minimal. And, and if I sort of look at this, if our direct operating costs in there for actual flying is going to be somewhere in the ballpark of $600 an hour, if you have pilots that are able to train an additional 10 hours a week, you've paid for that in about the space of a year, and that allows us then to take those, and we're not necessarily training that 10 hours a week, but that allows us to enhance this capability and then allows us to take the hours that would be spent on training, or most of the training, and then use that for actual operations where we're actually doing police work with it.
Certainly. And, and in terms of any other simulator, where is the next closest simulator to us? To what agency does it belong, and what is the restrictions on us accessing it or our allowance to be able to access it?
We fly a unique helicopter, so I can't speak to what LA sheriffs and LA, and LA County have or don't have in terms of simulator, but their platform is different. We're running a MD-500 series that is, and, and one that does not have a tail rotor. That is unique within, within law enforcement. There's not a lot of those in, in there. So it's not that readily available. Generally, if we have to go out and train, we're going a minimum of van eyes, if not sometimes camera reel. And then we have to pay for it on a, on an hourly basis. Using grant funds, this allows us to bring it in-house.
And one more, if I could.
Go ahead.
It just, and there was that question about Burbank, Councilmember Devine. So does Burbank pay us when they use this?
No, it becomes a joint thing. So example, for example, it's like they have, they have, through the same grant process, it's a regional grant process, through the same grant process, purchase equipment that is currently installed in our helicopters. And so we, but we operate this jointly on a, on a 50/50 basis. So the operational expenses are split 50/50, but when we're going to seek equipment, one of us will seek the equipment because it comes from, it has to be represented by one city or the other.
I see. Okay. But what you're, what you're saying is we're gonna, I, well, I'm not sure you're saying this, but let me, that we're gonna actually end up saving money because we don't have to run the actual, we don't have to operate the actual helicopter, and, I mean, I like the idea of not burning the fuel. So is, is, are we gonna have fewer hours that the helicopter is operating because of this?
I wouldn't say we're gonna have fewer hours that it's operating, but what we'll have is more hours operating for actual missions as opposed to just training. So we get, we're getting, if you will, a bigger bang for the buck.
Okay. I'd still prefer to see flock cameras or...
I will. I anticipate coming back to you with the next UASI grant with a significant amount of funding for that. We're already in the process of working on that.
I, I also agree that, you know, of all the needs that I feel that the community comes to us with, the training and the use of a flight simulator to the cost of $200,000 is not at the top of the list. I mean, there's so many other, I don't know how that necessarily impacts the overall increases that we've seen for need of services, whether it's individuals who are unhoused, individuals with mental health issues, individuals, you know, who are engaged in larceny, crime, catalytic converter theft, you name it. There are a number of, and speeding, just traffic safety. We've had that conversation here in these chambers numerous times, as well as every resident you talk to will concur. I personally, and I've stated this before, if I haven't stated it here from the dais, it's a good opportunity for me to say it, that I believe that as valuable as individuals such as yourself and others may feel that helicopters are in law enforcement, I think that technology is going the way of unmanned vehicles, drones, to do the same thing that we're doing with helicopters right now. And I think it'll probably be far more cost-effective to do. I, you see all these, you know, you see other agencies and other folks moving in that direction. I think that it's only a matter of time until the helicopters are phased out. This is a grant, I, I would also like to see Burbank be urged to pay and share, because I don't know if they're always sharing. I know that in the past, we've picked up a lion's share of the helicopter expenses from the city.
So just to be clear with Burbank, our agreement with them is, it's, our operational costs are split 50/50 with the city, with the City of Burbank. So our fuel costs, when we buy a new helicopter or asset, it's split 50/50. When we get to the grants, because this is a regional grant, one of the cities will ask for it, because you don't, you don't want both cities ask for it. There's a very limited pool of money available. So one of us will ask for the equipment, and then it goes into the, into the unit.
But there is a free rider problem here, right? Which is, we're asking, we're using up our opportunity to ask for $200,000 for something that they will then benefit from. Their pilots will benefit from, the, our pilots will benefit from as well, but we're the one asking it. Question that comes up is, well, what's Burbank getting that we would then benefit from, right? What are they getting? Are they getting some amazing vehicle? Are they gonna get some sort of equipment that we're gonna have access to? I don't know the answer to that. It's, it's fine for us to have it for our pilots, I guess, but I don't know what Burbank's asks have been.
As I said, every city has different, different asks based on where they are, and there's 45 independent cities in LA, so we're all asking for various, various pieces of, of equipment. This is what we were able to secure for this year.
All right. Well, any other questions, or would anyone like to make the motion?
I move 8C, 1, 2, and 3.
Well, I'll second it.
All right. Roll call on this item.
Councilmember Rosadurian.
Yes.
Brotman.
Yes.
Devine.
Oh, yes, of course.
Najarian and Merrick Sackin.
I didn't understand my name just then.
Yes. Yes. Thank you, Chief. All right. With that, let's move on to the next item on the agenda.
Next item is oral communications. Discussion is limited to items, not a part of this agenda. Each speaker is allowed five minutes. Council may question or respond to the speaker, but there will be no debate or decision. The same manager may refer the matter to the appropriate department for investigation and report. Mayor, you do have four cards.
First speaker is David Eisenberg. Mr. Eisenberg, you'll have five minutes.
Good evening, I'm Merrick Sackin and council members. My name is David Eisenberg. I'm here today to talk trash. I'm also here to talk equity, equity between single home, single-family homes and multifamily homes. I've been a Glendale resident in the condominium I live in since 1985. There are 50 units. I have pushed, and our building has gone along with recycling. When I started at the building, we had a bin, and it was emptied six times a week, no recycling. Now our bin is emptied three times a week. Our recycling bin is emptied, which is a full-size container, is emptied twice a week, and it fills up. Compared to other buildings, I, I look at other multifamily homes where I live, and there's no recycling bins. So our, our condo is willing, but we have to make all the effort. So I'm gonna talk, I'm not gonna talk about the price range when, when the fees went up over four times when, when you made the contract with these haulers. I'm not, I don't think I'll have time to talk about the inequities with bulky item pickup, but I'm gonna talk about the organics recycling program, which is pretty much geared to single-family homes. All the presentations that came to council that you listened to on this issue talked about using the green waste bin. Well, all the single-family homes know, if you live in a single-family home, you know what a green waste bin is. I remember way, way back when I had a single-family home, and I, I knew what that was. We don't know what that is in, in an apartment building. The, you know, the assumption is that all the commercial haulers and apartment buildings and condos count as a commercial hauler will have an organic or mandated to have an organic recycle bin. So in practice, because of my urging, because I go to the board meetings of our condo and I speak to them about the organic, they have attempted to contact the hauler and get information. Our building with 50 units, I would say there's probably half of the units do not have English as their main language. There's Armenian, Spanish, and Russian that I know of, and probably other languages. The only documents that we received and, and never sent to the condo, they, they have really not responded to the condo manager, is a picture which is almost indecipherable that they gave me that has little pictures of things that makes no sense to me, doesn't describe how to, you know, how to bag it into plastic bags and how to put it in the container and what the container is. And all the city documents and all the hauler documents give a picture of what the nice green recycle container. Well, what they did is they just threw a recycle bin on the street, on the curb in front of our building. I came over, I found it on its side. I knew it was ours because it had a street number on it. It's more gray than green. It doesn't have a clear label for what it's for, so I brought it inside. People right now are using it as a regular trash can because they don't know. I've been asked to, to try to find some explanation that we could give to our residents. So if we just put it out, you know, and say, you know, just leave it, nobody's gonna know what it's for. The residents won't know that they, that this is for, they have to bag the trash and all those instructions, and we really need those instructions in multiple languages. And, you know, I'm gonna ask that the city, that you all, make a, make a, a request for a staff report, because you've dropped the ball by giving, you know, giving it to these haulers and assuming that they're going to do their job and share their, you know, and, and, you know, take care of the organics and take care of the recycling. By the way, we have to pay for recycling now. It's not free like it was when the city picked up. That you pick up the ball on these, on these inequities between multifamilies, because, you know, people that live in apartments and condos, we want to recycle and we want to take care of organics, just like everybody in a single-family home. And we need that. And, and the same thing, you know, talked about those trash bin receptacles, they're automatically going to be delivered to single-family homes. There's 50 of us, you know, I, I want to get one. I don't have time to go and fill out a form online and make a reservation for a container and go pick it up. So, you know, perhaps one of you can make that kind of request that this gets taken care of. Thank you very much.
Well made and well taken, Mr. Eisenberg.
I just, I just wanted to know, Mr. Amrani, would it be helpful if they were, if Mr. Eisenberg, who was given like 50 of these for today, to take back to his HOA so that they know the process, and then we can follow up with the trash hauler, whoever they may be, and maybe get this cleared up?
Is that in multiple languages?
No, it's just one language.
Yeah, that's, see, that's, that's the issue we're running into. If we just put the bin out and half the people don't understand the directions, they won't know how to do it. So this might be something the city could work on translating that. I know you expect the haulers to do it, but they're not.
Okay. Yeah, it's good to know. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, Councilmember Devine. This is an issue that we've discussed with haulers on a bi-weekly basis. We have our, excuse me, our phone, phone calls. They initially sent this information to the property owner for each location, because that's how the accounts were set up. And, but the public outreach and making sure that everybody within those condominiums or apartment complexes know about this has begun and is gonna continue. We do have our website, which is Glendale Recycles, that has this information that can be, that can be printed, printed out. The haulers have also committed to sending these out to all these different multifamily locations in different languages. That was one of the requirements in the beginning. But again, they were sent to the property managers because that's how the accounts were set up. We are, again, following up on that. The public outreach has just begun. We have our webinars that we're having in terms of where, what each piece of, you know, food... terms of where, what each piece of, you know, food should go. And we're gonna continue to do that. And we're gonna continue to make sure that the haulers follow up on that.
Just like I stated that at that, you know, National Night Out, people were really anxious to get those pails to start composting. So I understand, you know, that you probably have a lot of people in your units that, that wanna do the same. So I think as much help as we can give them, we should.
Chief.
Are you advertising the webinars?
I'm sorry?
Are you advertising the webinars for people to know that this is happening? And is it, is it being conducted in different languages?
The webinar that we're conducting is in English, but we are advertising, we're reaching out to homeowners associations, we're reaching out to, to businesses, we're, you know, sending out flyers and basically publicizing it that way. We are working with our public outreach consultant in terms of translating those webinars to different languages. So far we've had two of them, but we'll continue to make sure that the multi, multi-language is a very good point that we're following up on.
If I just may add a recommendation to that, I don't know if you are advertising these on different ethnic medias. I don't know if that's something that your consultant or whoever you're working for, public outreach with, has made a suggestion. But if not, then I wanna make sure that, again, we're reaching people where they are and not expecting that somebody that's living in the building goes on our website, finds out there's a webinar that's potentially not translated. So I want, I want us to make a conservative, if, if this is a priority for us, then we need to make a conservative effort.
Absolutely.
Thank you.
All right, next speaker is Claire Calderon. Ms. Calderon, you'll have five minutes.
Okay. Now, I'm here to discuss construction at 1701 Chevy Knoll Drive. I checked and there was a large construction directly above my house. I reported it to Neighborhood Services to see if a permit was pulled and there was no permit. It looked like a deck. A case was opened, inspector went out, and when I called to check what happened, I was told that he had no access to the site and the case was closed. I said the building, the structure had never been there before, and I did speak to the inspector and the case was reopened. I'm very concerned about this because it's directly over my house. If, I'm concerned about water drainage and fire danger. It's, it hasn't, I've lived in that house for 40, over 40 years. I've worked for the city and I know that every, everybody in the city has always been very good about following up on things. But the inspector told me that they couldn't access the property because it was gated. They eventually put a notice up, but can a homeowner actually keep someone off their property if they're building something that hasn't been permitted? It really concerns me that this went on. The construction seems to have stopped, but there's actually almost a full deck up there now. Anyway, I appreciate all of you being on the city council. I know it's a very hard job and I appreciate you listening to people's concerns and taking our interests to heart. And I guess I don't need five minutes. Thank you.
Thank you very much, ma'am. Well, staff, I know that there's another caller on this, another caller, another resident who's speaking on this, Alisa Delenko.
Yes.
Let's, yeah, let's have your comments and then after that, we'll have staff respond.
Okay, great, thank you. My name is Alisa Delenko. I'm here with Ms. Garcia and Ms. Calderon. We are residents of 1651, 1661, and 1677 Sheridan Road. We've all lived in Glendale 40 to 50 years respectively. The five of you were sent emails with the pictures and the timeline. Ellen, you were not because we didn't have your email. However, Ms. Garcia's got copies that are printed and updated versions of things that have occurred. So if you'd like a copy, Ms. Garcia can hand that to you. I also, before I start, wanna thank Dan Brotman and Paula Devine for acknowledging receipt of our email. We really appreciate it. And a great, great, great thank you to you for actually driving up to the property to see the construction. Now, what I'd like to do is talk about the concerns that we have about the compliance department and the inspector, Shan Kapretian. Ms. Garcia, Ms. Calderon, as she stated, called the city to inform them of the construction of the deck on the 13th of July. On the 15th, they were informed that the case had been closed. A week later, on the 15th, excuse me, on the 15th of July, the city confirmed to Ms. Garcia that there was no permits on the property and to Ms. Calderon. On the 22nd of July, Ms. Garcia called and they said, oh, we closed the case. We didn't have access to the property or owner information. Now, Ms. Garcia, Ms. Calderon, and I are not high-tech people. We did a simple Google search. We found out the owner information, the date of the escrow, the length of the escrow, the state of the price of the, you know, of the property amongst other pertinent information. Now, I don't wanna seem critical in any way, shape, or form. I really don't. That's not my intention. However, I don't know if this was laziness or incompetence on the part of the inspector that, that having 20 years' experience, he was not able to find the information either due to a lack of concern, regard, or just didn't have the knowledge on how to require that, that information. So we continued. We went to the city, we took Claire's property. I met with them at 10:40 AM. He parked in Claire's driveway. He got out of the car with his iPad. He took one picture and then was getting back into his car. And Claire and I said, hey, come into Claire's yard because you'll see the immensity of the project. It's not just the deck. There's a retaining wall. There's a cement, there's cement cylinder blocks. There's all this work tile being done. And so he reluctantly nodded and said, fine. He went in, he took more pictures. And then he advised us. He said, don't be surprised since you filed a complaint on the owners of Chevy Knoll that they may file a complaint on you. Now, in psychology, they say that one's perception is a reality. Well, Claire and I took that as an intimidation tactic. We didn't appreciate it and we didn't think it was coming from a place of good intention from this particular inspector. So we're concerned regarding the treatment we received from the city of Glendale and from Shan. We feel that if it happened to us, it happens to other residents. And those residents don't have the resources and support that fortunately we do have. So Mr. Kapretian called Claire on July 29th, which is the day after he came up to take pictures, to tell Claire that he was denied access to the property. However, on July, on August 4th, Ms. Garcia and I drove up to the Chevy Knoll property and there's a pillar outside of this gate that was, that was built in the property with a notice from Mr. Kapretian asking to have access to the property by the owner dated August 3rd. Yet he informed Ms. Calderon on the 29th that he had been denied access. So here's the thing. Our concerns are legitimate. Our concerns are safety. That's really the main issue for us, the safety. I don't want people sliding down that deck and find people swimming in my pool. We don't want people to flick a cigarette off of that deck because everything is dry up there. If you go up to the Chevy Chase Estates above the country club, you'll see that. So, you know, we're concerned that the way we were treated, we think that others will be treated that way. And we're concerned, not just for 1701 Chevy Knoll, but for all the properties, all the residents, and all the people of Glendale, that they should not only be treated fairly, but should be respected. And their concerns should actually be taken seriously. And that's all I need to say. But I appreciate you guys. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Delenko. I will say that although I didn't get a chance to respond to the emails, I, I find what you've described to be troubling for a number of reasons, not the least of which is that someone in this city feels that they can do unpermitted work on a home, which to me is unacceptable. I've had this conversation with numerous residents and homeowners associations representatives. And I, I will try and do whatever I can to make sure that that does not continue in your neighborhood or anywhere else.
Well, I'll tell you, the owner of 1701 Chevy Knoll is a prominent realtor. He's been in Glendale for over 25 years. So he should be very aware that permits for a hillside property, you know, are necessary.
Thank you. So, and in terms of how the interaction went with city staff, city manager's office is aware of it. We're aware of it. We will look into it to see what we can do to improve the communication with the residents. But this is something I would like to say to staff that should not go unnoticed or be taken lightly. I don't know what the details of it are, but learning, hopefully I'll learn more about the facts as well, but I urge you to look into it. Council, City Manager Galan, do you have any comments on this?
Yes, as a matter of fact, yes. Thank you for the, for allowing me to say a couple of words, Mr. Mayor. We, we do understand, we empathize with the residents' concerns about the safety of this structure. You are correct, it is unpermitted. However, I'm going to let Mr. Tuktalian, our interim CDD, or Community Development Director, who has been involved with this case, this case was not closed, it's still open, we are still pursuing it. And Mr. Tuktalian has been in contact with Ms. Calderon, I believe, at least one of the residents, and the property owner of this subject property as well, who has started working on permitting this structure. So I'll let him add to some more details of that case I just described.
Mayor Kusakian, members of the city council, I'm not sure there is a whole lot more that I can add to that. That's, that's a synopsis of the position that, that we're in today. I believe there, just with, with, with one correction, though. I believe that there was an error initially and the case had some case notes indicating that access wasn't accessible, so to speak, and that the inspector had closed the case. That was not a case being closed. It was an error in the actual notes of the case. However, it was relayed that way to the residents. Regardless, I believe that between the time that the initial complaint came in about illegal construction and the time that inspectors were out there was within, I wanna say, three or four days. And at this point, no additional construction has occurred. Our inspector has gained access to the site because there was another contractor, a subcontractor on the property doing some paint work, I believe, and we were able to gain access that way. It does, I believe, have a long driveway with a gate, so we can't exactly jump over that, as, as you're aware. I know that we've now had adequate evidence of the work going on out there based on not only photos that were provided to us, but our own investigation from the residence property below. And the last thing I'll add to that would be that the property owner of this particular address has also contacted, I believe, an architect or designer, an engineer, one or the other, and they're currently in the process of trying to begin the permitting process, so to speak, after the fact. That doesn't come easy, of course. There, there are penalties associated with trying to legalize work after the fact. And frankly, it might mean that what's been done has to be undone. Ultimately, we have to make sure it complies with health and safety and building codes.
Councilmember Devine.
When I went up to see that site, these women are not exaggerating about the size of that deck. That deck is huge. They could fit hundreds of people on that deck. So I can understand their fear of, you know, the dangers involved. One of my biggest, besides the fact that, you know, the treatment that, that suppose they've gotten, this idea of people doing work without permits and then after the fact applying for permits, I think this council needs to do something about that. I think we have to say, if you do work without a permit and we find out about it, no matter what, you are going to remove that work, get permits, and start all over again. Because we, this is not the first time. It's not gonna be the last. And we have another case that's coming before us eventually, I think, with one of our restaurants, that there was work done, no permits, and now they're getting their permits and everything is gonna be okay. And I think that's wrong. I think that's absolutely wrong. If you do work and it has not been permitted, and I don't care what the fine is, people don't care about the fines. That doesn't mean anything to them. But if they have to tear out that work and then reapply and redo the work, I think maybe then we might make some headway in stopping this illegal work. And if that's, and this could be the, the case that, that breaks the camel's back because that was ridiculous. And there is not a long driveway to that gate. It's a cul-de-sac. The gate's right on the cul-de-sac. And there, the house is right back there. Somebody has to be living in that house. People are living there. So...
Are they even allowed to have a gate at the entrance of the driveway?
We did question that before. They did get a permit for that.
No back and forth.
Just asking.
But it was a fire road. Holly got that permit, I don't know.
It's, yes, it's possible. It depends on what the setback at that property is. And I apologize if I misspoke. I haven't been out to the property myself. All I know is there is a gate, there is a driveway, there is a house. None of the work is visible from the street. However, it is visible from the residents' home below. And I believe the street, and I believe if I'm looking at the residents, maybe just a nod from the street below as well. Correct?
You can see it. I mean, it's, it's kind of similar.
Thank you, thank you.
We're getting a little bit far along.
I, I understand. We're also answering some of the questions of the residents. We won't be able to get into a further discussion because then it becomes an item that wasn't agendized. And we're not going to give direction to, staff is aware of it. We're now aware of it. We've all made our comments very, I think, explicitly and publicly. So await for more responses from Mr. Tuktalian and staff. And thank you to all my colleagues, those who responded, those who actually went up there, and, and for the concern. I think you've heard from us. Thank you. Next speaker is Michael Bieber, Beber. Please correct me on this pronunciation of your name.
Good evening, Mayor and city council members. My name is Michael Belzer.
Elzer.
Yeah. And I am the president of the Friends of Shosseon. We are a all-volunteer, nonprofit organization dedicated to the preservation and use of the Shosseon Tea House, which is the Japanese tea house and friendship garden located in beautiful Brand Park. And as of March of this year, we've been able to begin our in-person events that we offer on a monthly basis. And I'm here tonight to talk about a very important event that we're going to have as of Sunday, August 21st. We'll be having Mikal Vega, who is a retired Navy SEAL with 22 years of service in Naval Special Warfare, talk about his life and take us through a series of exercises that have been very effective in helping him relieve the symptoms of stressors of service that first responders and veterans can experience over a period of time. He has developed after retirement his own organization called Vital Warrior. And Vital Warrior is dedicated to serving the needs of veterans and first responders as they deal with the negative effects of the, the stressors of service that can happen on a daily life, in daily life. On the Sunday, the 21st, between 11 and 1, Mr. Vega will talk about his life and then take people through a series of yoga exercises that are designed to reduce stress. He'll be teaching some basic postures and breathing exercises and meditation methods. It's event, the event is open to the public. It's free. And all we ask is that there's pre-registration and that's done by email directly to me so that we'll know how many chairs to provide for everybody. It will be held outdoors and so it's gonna be hot, August 21st, but we'll be under the shady trees and under canopy. But people should bring hats, sunglasses, and water. And the only other thing to remember for people that are gonna join us is that Brand Park is a busy park. And so finding a parking space is kind of a challenge on the weekends. But they should definitely come and drive through the two parking decks. They might get lucky and find a space. And if they don't, it's okay. They can just park right down in the neighborhood and walk in. It'll be perfectly fine there. And if you have any questions, I'm happy to answer them. We do have a calendar of events that will show the rest of the events for the year. There are two important ones coming up. August, I'm sorry, October 16th will be our first-ever Korean Culture Day. And this is an outreach to the Korean community. We'll be emphasizing and showcasing Korean tea ceremony, a martial art known as hopkido, and traditional Korean music and dancing. And then in December, December 18th, we'll have our annual Holiday Tea and Japan Culture Day.
Thank you, Mr. Belzer. Very exciting. And we appreciate all the work that you're doing to revive and revitalize the tea house, which is a true asset and gem for our community. Thank you.
Thank you.
In the future, you don't have to stay through the whole meeting. We have a three-minute portion at the front of the meeting. You just fill out one of these cards for community event announcements.
Great.
We have it split specifically for individuals like you who may have... We have it split specifically for individuals like you who may have, although we hope you enjoyed your time with us this evening.
I always do. It's always interesting.
For the future, for community event announcements and people who want to speak only three minutes, you can speak earlier in the meeting. Thank you again.
Thank you very much.
And we have one caller, one guest, Councilmember Devine, who do you say it is? Yes, let's hear from Edwin.
Edwin, you have five minutes. Go ahead, Edwin.
Hi, good evening, council. How's everybody doing today?
Please, go ahead.
Yes, council, I'd like to talk about crosswalks in the city of Glendale. The intersection of Colorado and Central, Brand Boulevard and Broadway, and Brand and Colorado. The one thing I've noticed is that those crosswalks are not a diagonal crosswalk. I noticed that you guys have only one diagonal crosswalk, and I want to ask if you, if the city can look into installing diagonal crosswalks at those intersections. Another thing I would like to talk about is a bill called Senate Bill 930. This bill was introduced by State Senator, California Senator Scott Wiener, and it was introduced with Assembly Member Mark Henley. SB 930, this bill that Senator Wiener introduced, it allows bars to stay open until 4:00 a.m. in the morning. And that really drives me crazy because I always think about, we're going to see a lot of drunk drivers, we're going to see a lot of drunk drivers crashing into cars, houses, and I just want to see if you guys are aware of California Senate Bill 930 that was introduced by Scott Wiener. Because I don't want to see drunk drivers crashing into houses and crashing into innocent people's cars parking streets. It does concern me, and that's why I like to see if you guys are aware of that. Thank you.
Councilmember Devine is saying that she is aware. I am now aware, Brand and Colorado and Brand and Broadway as diagonal crosswalks, I'm sure our transportation and our Public Works Department would have considerable amount to say about that as to what necessitates it. It's not, we have tried it in other places, I know Montrose was one of them, and it did not, it was not well-received, it did not work there. In areas where it can work, I'm sure that we can consider it, but I appreciate the call. So, I'm sure that in a future report to council that, that covers mobility issues, how we paint and decorate our crosswalks, we will probably have more discussion on this. Thank you, Edwin. With that, what news business do we have?
I have a motion. I'd like to introduce a motion authorizing the city attorney to file a petition for writ of mandate challenging the Superior Court's denial of the city's motion for summary judgment in the matter of Francis Dickinson versus City of Glendale, Los Angeles Superior Court, case number 21, STCV 08281.
All right, is there a second?
A second.
Let's have a roll call, please.
Councilmember Asaturnian?
Yes.
Brotman?
Yes.
Devine?
Yes.
Najarian?
Yes.
Thank you. With that, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
Move to adjourn.
We have a second.
Second.
Thank you. We stand adjourned. We'll see you all next week. Thank you very much. Good night, good luck.